All right, good evening. Let's call the board of the Shakopee School Board Learning Session of August 12th to order. Ashley, would you please call the board?
Thomas.
Yes ma'am.
Thompson.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
McKinnon.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
That was like a... there was breath there, I thought there was...
Was it?
I'm used to being the last one, so it's kinda like when I'm first.
I got to go on because I'm running.
I know, I know, first.
Actually, you did great job.
Will you join me and please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I believe we do not have, since it's summer, we don't have any here good news schools tonight. Not that there's not good news, we just haven't agendaed out.
Not tonight, but we will have the next day.
Oh, how about that? Great. I know that sometimes kids are gone or parents are gone, so it's hard to get any clear. All right, let's move to item four, consideration of agendas presented. Do we have any changes aware of? I'm not aware of any. Okay, I'll look for a motion to accept the agenda presented.
I see.
Thank you Judy, is there a second? Thank you Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed. Motion passes, we have our agenda. May as well get right into it, follow the flow. Gentlemen, you want to come on up? Introduce yourselves and you've got the floor to fill over what?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, Superintendent Redmond and members of the board, I'm Kelly Smith with Baker Tilly Municipalizers. And we've been surveying with you tonight here with my colleague Jeff Solomon. We are both retired school folks. I'm a retired school superintendent with my last position down in Brooklyn, eleven years, and Jeff was the finance director, his last position in Rosemont Apple Valley Eden Schools. So we're happy to be with you tonight to present the information on this community survey that we did on the Shakopee School this year. I'm going to be doing most of the presentation, but I would encourage you, if you have questions as we're going through this, feel free to ask at any time.
Okay.
I'll just right away, no problem. So this survey outline included interviews with 422 registered voters in the Shakopee School District. Interviews were completed June 25th to July 1st. And approximate margin of error on most questions in the survey is plus or minus 4.7. That's based on your total voter target file and the number of surveys that respondents that we had throughout the process. So we, who did we call? We included demographic targets intended to provide a representative sample of voters in the district. So we looked at your voter file, combined that with your student information system to determine parents, age of voters, how frequently they vote, male, female, we took a look at those demographics, and then we tried to match that as closely as possible with 422 people that we called, ended up talking to on the survey. And whenever you're trying to match multiple demographics in a survey, is it possible to match every one of them? So wherever we oversampled one way or the other, we do a statistical calculation to modify and change the data to match your target file. So, and you'll see, I will tell you, in one area we were a little overrepresented, and it's pretty typical, with 65 and older, we were overrepresented. It's no surprise. They answer their landline phones more often than others do. And so that's a pretty typical reaction, that we were over in that category. So here's the targets that we included, and we, cell phones and homeownership was also track of, that wasn't one of the targets that we were trying to hit. And we do always get considerable number of respondents via cell phone, so that is pretty typical. So the main body of the survey asked participants for their opinion about the school district. And then we looked at different kinds of community feedback in a couple of areas. We created, asked them to grade various aspects of the district's performance, wanted them to compare the current schools to neighboring districts or perhaps schools that they went to as a student, and then rating important characteristics for their current schools. This is a question that we give on almost every survey we do, regardless of what the overall intent of that survey is, and that's to ask respondents to grade their local school. So students are often given the grades of A, B, C, D, and fail to denote the quality of their work. Suppose the Shakopee public schools were graded in the same way, what grade would you give to the public schools here? And you see our responses, 57% of the respondents give A and B grades to the school district. 11% gave B and F grades, and 14% could not offer response. They may be a new member of your community, never had anybody in your school system, or their alumni parents whose children graduated quite some time ago and didn't feel they wanted to offer an opinion. With that question, we use that question because it's been asked on a national survey from Five Delta Capin for over 75 years. Every year, districts across the nation, respondents are asked that same question, to rate their local schools. So we have a comparison on a national average. And for the purpose of the comparison, that 14% that said, "I don't know," we remove that group. So you'll see some of the percentage change a little bit, it's because we've eliminated that 14% that said, "We do not know." So here's your comparison to a national survey, the Five Delta Capin Survey. And this is a pretty typical picture that we see with Minnesota schools. People are proud of our schools in Minnesota, Shakopee is no exception. You are beyond in As and Bs. What I would say, and you're lower in Ds and Fs. In general, you're slightly higher in the Ds and Fs than what we typically see. We typically see maybe 2% failing and 4%, but overall, very good scores here with As and Bs, and your Bs are well beyond the national average.
Kelly, was the number of non-responses comparable as well?
Yeah, that's pretty typical. We're going to see 10 to 15, even up to 20% in some communities.
So we're not skewed one way or the other in that regard?
No, no, no.
And this is just an aggregate, overall district performance, it's not quality of education.
Right, it's just that question, we're not saying, we'll get into some of those other details later, but this is just in general.
How would you grade the Shakopee public schools?
In this case, you removed the non-respondents and recalculated the percentages?
Yes, yes.
That's not the method you used throughout this?
No, no.
How do you decide when to do that?
We really only do that with this because the Five Delta Capin Survey bases their final report on only grades that were given. So we have nowhere to respond with those people that don't give us a grade. So in that regard, we pulled it aside, so we're comparing apples to apples. So I'll back up. So if you look here, we have 13% giving As. Now when we pulled out those no responses, it's still the same number, but it's greater percentage. So this is the only one time that we'll be, as we go forward, and it's to present apples to apples with Five Delta Capin.
Did you reference versus your other clients throughout the Twin Cities?
Throughout Minnesota.
Throughout Minnesota. Is that something that we could get that data, or is that private data district?
Good question. I could maybe give you an aggregate.
Okay.
I'll have to ask if our analyst keeps that aggregate data.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I'd love to see the Minnesota or the seven county or, you know, any size without getting into, this is Elaine versus Minnetonka versus...
Yep, yep. We will take a look at that and get back to someone here in the district group. Then we did ask more specific questions. Financial management was the next topic. Participants were asked to grade the district's financial management. 21% of respondents gave A and B grades to the district, 39% gave B and F grades, and 1 in 5 could not offer a response. And I, a couple comments, those are some difficult numbers for the district. You've been through some difficult years, so it's perhaps no surprise. Typically here, we see a lot of people who don't have a response because our, I would say, our normal taxpayer out there doesn't know about school finances unless you're out for an operating levy or bond election. It's kind of in the background unless there are no big issues. Well, you've had issues here, and so it's been front and center. So only 1 in 5 could not offer response, that's quite a bit lower. Often see that up to 35% that can't offer response. But here's what people are thinking about financial management right now. And I know as you're moving forward, I think you're in the last year of, you know, positive situation, and that trend is moving forward as you have budgets put in place for the next year as well, so. They were also asked if their opinion had changed over the last 12 months. So basically, we're looking for some trend. Do you think the district has made adjustments and are things going in a better direction? 35% said their opinion was improving, 9% said financial management was getting worse. So the good news, 35% says, yes, things are moving in the right direction. The school board, we asked, sorry, school board, we asked similar thing to grade the school board's performance. 29% of respondents gave A and B grades for the school board performance, 25% gave B and F grades. Again, those are some lower numbers than we typically see. Again, I certainly say it's a reaction to where the district has been over the last four to five years. 25% of the participants said their opinion of the board had improved over the past year. Half said their opinion was unchanged, so there's some progress. People believe things are improving in this area as well. Superintendent, same kind of question, please grade superintendent. 41% of respondents gave A and B grades for the performance of the superintendent. Just 4% gave B and F grades, very large proportion, 43% could not offer an opinion, and that's pretty understandable. Your larger district, your superintendent, ten on board, just over six months, or just that six months on this survey was asked of respondents. So, but good news, 41% certainly A and B. Technology service, just a general question there about overall technology services in the district. 57% gave A and B grades to the school district. 3%, only 3% gave B and F grades. 28% could not offer a response. Again, I would say that 57% or the 28% have nobody in school, or they haven't been in the buildings trying to log on to wireless, anything like that, which is pretty typical. 57% is, this is not a typical question that we ask, but 57% A and B is a pretty good score for something like this that is always changing. With regard to improvements, 18% of participants thought technology services were improving over the past 12 months, only 3% thought things were getting worse. More than half again said their opinion was unchanged. And there, I don't know that the district had any significant initiative that happened over that time. It's, there wasn't a big rollout of one-to-one or anything that would have changed the landscape in that regard.
Oh, yeah. We've rolled it forward, I mean, it's been in place. But there hasn't been any Big Bang, you know, headline about we've invested in technology.
Kelly, not for now, for sure, but do we have, do you have, thus, do we have access to, I'll just call it cross tabs? We can see these questions by parent or by something that way, because I'd be more interested, frankly, on that.
Yep. Actually, we provided a copy to this superintendent, so he has it. That's 43 pages, but yeah, it's got each individual question, and it's a lot of numbers that look like this, but it's got every demographic group in there, age group, parent, and so on. That's what you're looking for. So yep, the district has a copy of that. And you're right, that's where the real information, I think, speaks to you, so. Next, we move to teachers and ask this general question, do you trust, have trust and confidence in the men and women who are teaching children in our public schools? And very good response here, 76% say, yes, we have trust and confidence. 12% said no, and 12% no answer. Again, very positive scores speaks well to the staff that are teaching the students within the Shakopee schools.
Excuse me, could I ask about the page before?
Sure.
Was the question asked exactly like that, it would say in Shakopee schools? So could we interpret it as a general?
Right, it was asked, well, let me double check, but I believe it was asked exactly like that. Yes, do you have in our public schools? So, yes, we believe that people were thinking Shakopee because we're calling on behalf of the Shakopee Public Schools. There could be some interpretation.
And do you have the comparison with other districts on that?
We likely do, so I would have to look at that specifically. Typically, you know, going to be, surveys score above 70% is very good, but we could look for some comparative districts and see what we have. And then we looked, asked participants, set of questions, asking them to compare Shakopee to other school districts. The first two questions asked participants to compare Shakopee against neighboring school districts, and the remaining five questions asked respondents to compare Shakopee with the schools they attended in three years.
We didn't define neighboring, that was what they interpreted.
Yes, so if they're on the south side, maybe of the prior later Jordan, or Eastern Park, yes, that was up to then, we just said neighboring school.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that 24% better than, is that, I guess it depends district to district, doesn't it?
What's that? Whoa.
I'm reading Matthew.
Oh, I'd be reading that.
I'll read questions.
So, in comparison with teachers in neighboring public school districts, do you think the quality of teachers in Shakopee public schools is much better, somewhat better, about the same, somewhat worse, or much worse? So here's the reason, 24% say Shakopee teachers are better than neighboring school districts. 13% feel Shakopee's teachers are not as good, plurality, and 44% feel they're very comparable. This, I'd have to go back, this is a different, a question that's worded differently than we've seen in other, I'll have to see if we have a matching question in some other surveys. I don't recall it being asked in this manner, but we will check that out as well.
Because to your point, we've got some neighboring districts that have very good reputations there. If 24% feel that we're ahead of schools around us, that's pretty complimentary. And the fact that it's almost double the number of people say our teachers are better than the number of people who feel they're not as good, it's a pretty good ratio.
In comparison with neighboring public school districts, do you think the quality of education by Shakopee public, provided by Shakopee public schools is much better, somewhat better, about the same, somewhat worse, or much worse? So again, overall quality of education, responses are similar to those for teacher quality. 26% say Shakopee provides a higher quality of education than neighboring districts, and 14% feel quality is not as good. And again, roughly the same number, 46% feel it's comparable. So a good comparison, and to your point, Matt, yeah, you have some quality districts surrounding you, so that's good news for your district, good societies. Now, we asked a little bit differently, and compared with schools you attended, do you think the public schools in our community today are better or worse at each of the following? So we gave them a list of items here. So encouraging critical thinking and creativity is the first, and I'm just going to add, the numbers in the gray are the combination of much better and somewhat better. So 50% said we're better than my childhood school in encouraging critical thinking and creativity. 50% said preparing students for college. 49% providing high-quality education. Developing interpersonal skills is 45%, and preparing students for work is the lowest at 38%.
That's so much better, I mean, I could see that being matched.
Well, you've covered lots of theories, and I've got a few.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. While I'm looking at that positive side on these charts, I'm also looking at the negative side, so which things, and so, like you pointed out, school to work efforts are not highly regarded, and there's an equally high negative aspect there as well. And we can, we can talk about that now, there's a slide coming up, I think, that kind of gets into that one, talks about the academies. Maybe look at that information and see if that clears up your question.
Before you go, and I think explaining the 27 here as well, where that came from, just looking at the top row, because...
Yes, so that's the, that is the somewhat worse or much worse, 27%.
Combined, so the real comparison is better or somewhat better than 50 versus the 27.
Right.
Correct. Not 50 versus 50.
We've got an orange bar that has no opinion, so.
You have the opposite.
And about the same, and I'm sitting in the middle, so. So that turquoise, that's the color people would use, turquoise in the middle is about the same, so we're not counting that in the 50 or the 27, that's your point. So good marks for critical thinking, creativity, college prep, and providing high-quality education. Approximately half say Shakopee does better, and a quarter say their childhood schools were better. And then interpersonal skills and preparation for work did not score as highly. And that was 38% saying Shakopee does better, 34% saying it's the same or does, it's worse. Participants were also asked to rate eight characteristics of the school district. For this list, the ratings were simply the opinions of participants, and were not in the context of comparisons to other schools. And I would also say, in these items, when we had a list of five or eight things, they're given randomly, so we didn't always lead with that creativity or interpersonal skills. They're given randomly, so there's no positional bias. And the same question is always asked first, so people might answer that a little higher rating.
You're saying within our survey?
Yes, yes. Yep.
Kelly, there's a reason that you called out in that mental bullet, ratings were simply the opinions of participants, the whole thing is the opinion of participants.
Correct, but we didn't specifically say in this one, compared to your hope, your school as a youth or a neighboring.
I understand that, we had comparisons, but the entire survey is all perceptual, is opinion.
What people were thinking, June 25th through July 1st.
Had a good day of work, had a bad day of work, whatever it may be.
Had a bad week at work today, or something just always.
Something like that. It's only one day. Yeah, I know.
And then we did ask an additional question about the confidence in the safety and security of Shakopee schools, and obvious, that's going to be a more common theme and a question we're putting in a lot of our surveys now. So again, the question was presented in this way, I'd like to read you a list of characteristics about the school district, for each one, tell me if you would rate Shakopee public schools as excellent, good, fair, or poor. So slightly different measuring stick here. So we have extracurricular sports at 61%, academic achievement 61%, variety of courses at 61%, music, theater, and arts 56%. Again, this is excellent to good. Non-athletic extracurriculars 49%, preparing for global world 43%, personalized instruction 42%, and class sizes 36%. And we'll see in the next slide, but you'll see on class sizes, obviously, there's a significant negative reaction to class sizes. And I don't have comparative district data, but in general, that's an area of concern in just about every district that we're doing similar surveys.
Expect that.
Well, I'm back to the point of this being perceptual, right? If I was asked to rate extracurricular sports, would I be rating the quality, the number of offerings, you know, it's...
Number of kids.
Number of kids playing, or is it true, win-loss record, right? So you can spit, you can think that in four or five different ways, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's what that person thinks that means. Class sizes are always, always a concern for every parent.
Yeah.
And typically, we compared ours to Metro, DCSU, we've been on the average or smaller. Yet we still have parents who are concerned, saying class sizes are too big.
So the highest ratings were for sports, academic achievement, and variety of courses offered, and 60% or more gave ratings of excellent, good. Lowest ratings were for class sizes, and then personalized instruction in preparing students for life in the global world. And here, the excellent, the good ratings averaged 40% for these items, while fair, poor ratings averaged 42%. Now, we asked next about confidence in school security. 37%, well, you see the individual numbers, 11% extremely confident, very confident, 26% somewhat confident, 38%. Only 3% not at all confident, so that's, that's good news. In general, your buildings are fairly new, so you have more security systems at your entrances than some districts with older facilities. And so people are fairly confident about the school's security in the district. Then we did ask about the academies of Shakopee, so they were asked first how familiar they were with the academies of Shakopee and Shakopee schools. And then those who expressed at least some familiarity were asked how well the academies were performing. And again, these academies are relatively new feature, so to no surprise, only 56% were at least somewhat familiar with the academies. 44% were unfamiliar, were chosen not to answer. So with regard to their familiarity, again, you see a large majority varied as somewhat familiar with the academies. So how well do the academies perform? 8% extremely well, 32% very well, somewhat well at 32%, 9% not very, 4% not at all, 50 ignoring. So again, this is of those 50, 60... is of those fifty-six percent that responded, so, so it would certainly have a higher margin of error, but overall, your results are pretty positive for this early in the stage of academies themselves, pretty positive remarks from those people who know about them. Our next gets into the quality of life, this is a kind of a general question we ask on many surveys, going to read you a statement, please tell me whether you strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree with it. Strong public schools are directly linked to the quality of life and viability of our community, and we're looking here for positive response, and you have a very positive response, where ninety-three percent agree or strongly agree with that, and this looks to, you know, while there are some concerns in some of the previous slides, there's still strong, there's a belief that strong public schools are a critical factor to quality of life in Sharkview community, and so you have ninety-three percent believing that, and that's very good news for the district. Strongly agree responses were most common given by the following groups, just a, a little breakdown in this particular area, voters age fifty-five to sixty-four, alumni, parents, and parents of elementary students, and then residents specifically listed, living on the eastern region of the district, so Sharkview precincts four and twelve, if you're familiar with that, and Prior Lake Savage area, it's six, so.
Being a joke.
How many of those boxes do you check there?
I need to get a call.
Four and twelve.
He tends on that. Twelve is what ran over.
I'm a perfect ten.
Four is four. There you go. And to highlight the disagree and strongly disagree, those groups are so small, there was really no demographic breakdown in those districts. Another question we ti- we typically ask when we're doing operating levy or bond issue surveys, or any type of survey with districts, is how are you getting your information from the school district? So the preferred information source, and, and this is quite a typical pattern here, it's, it, it's a buffet of ways to communicate with your public, you cannot concentrate on one area, because people are all getting information in different ways, so thirty percent print media, your local paper, or any printed materials from the district, word of mouth is always one of the highest things we see in survey after survey, so whether it's your staff that are talking, or parents and children in your schools, that carries a lot of weight with, with members of your community, and then we have social media and district website, so.
You don't give these choices, this is, this is an open-ended question?
Right.
Or did you give choices?
No, um, let me double check on this, we've asked it in different ways, let me see what I missed on how to do it.
Cause you'd have to, if it's open-ended, you'd have to interpret answers it to fit a box, I'm just curious.
Because we take the choices.
It was choices, that I missed one.
Kelly, my question, on the page before, it talks about information about the school district, and you're using the word from the school district.
I wonder-
Couldn't these be from other sources that aren't the school district? You know, you said print media from the school district, there's other forms.
Well, I said your local paper, or perhaps print media from the district.
So could be any, any information source, that was my, yeah.
There's, I think, a Shark, like a River Valley News, and there's a Sharkview flyer, any of that that has printed material.
That doesn't include, when we've done things that have gone up in the snowmell, right, so it's not-
Right, right.
Would they think the red folder for that, huh?
Might as well make sure that was-
Yes, yes, so.
Is that fairly common distribution?
Yeah, that, I mean, this, this might be a little more, a little more district website than we've seen.
Thanks.
Social media seems to be, social media is growing, and within social media, we're talking Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all those things that are going out, but district website, typically, we're lucky to see, get it into the double digits, I mean, we, people do a lot of work on that, but in general, that has not scored as well, but pretty typical breakdown that you see, no runway winner in how people are getting the information, it's pretty, pretty spread out. So just some general findings, strong favorable responses related to the overall quality of education and the teaching staff, certainly a negative evaluation of financial management, which is significantly higher than what we typically see, and, and the same follows for school board, and as I said earlier, that's certainly reflective of the journey you've been on recently. Evaluation of the superintendent was positive, we're not sure if he's drafting from a previous superintendent or, or not, but, but the-
Actually, they asked on that, we didn't clarify that at all, so someone could be thinking, you know-
Superintendent anger.
Well, yeah, just, we don't know the timeframe, they're just-
Right, right, so we didn't say superintendent.
Right.
Class sizes, as we pointed out-
The baseline's lower than that.
When you go Dave.
Class sizes were negative, as we had pointed out earlier, I think a real good news for the district is those questions that we're asking, are things getting better? Were trending typically past, that, within the, and that, that's just the last twelve months, that things are moving in the right way, and then overall, and I think Chair Bowman said to us before the meeting, you know, this is the benchmark, so you have this to evaluate, you know, your strategic plan as you're moving forward, are there gonna be key aspects that you wanna focus on as a, as a district in the future, you've now got some benchmarks in place as of July first, two thousand nineteen, that you can move forward from, so. So with that, and thank you for the opportunity to present, and to do the survey for you, and we'd be happy to answer any other questions that we can have. Other questions?
We're either engaged all along.
Yep.
So the plan is to do this, again, one year and then two years?
Yep, the next, each of the next two years, and then after that, every two to three years, what we wanna do is, yes, as we mentioned, this is a baseline, and then begin to look at it longitudinally, with the idea that, you know, there, there's obviously some very positive things, but there's always gonna be areas that we wanna, we wanna improve, and so, and even being able to compare from here to here, I think is valuable.
Would you expect that you would ask basically the same, if not identically the same questions?
Right, so, yes, I would say as we go forward, you may not ask all the, these questions, but the ones you do ask want to be the same, so you can have that perspective of, are you making progress?
Is it important even to do it at the same time here?
That's not so much, but it would be better if we could do it at that same time of year, so, you know, depending on the circumstances, you'll have to look if that is a good time for the district to be out there doing that, but, yeah, that would give you that nice twelve months, if you didn't call it in June, you can ask if, if we could say consistent.
Questions, well, you said you controlled when one group got overrepresented, you did some statistical work, and do you do the same if parents of kids in a district, their representation versus families that don't have current kids?
Yeah, so that's one of the characteristics that we track, parents are not there, so you'll see, you know, in the, in the breakdown of the results, so.
Let me, let me just follow, is, is there any goal for three-quarters or half, or it, it is what it is, of the respondents have kids in the district currently?
It's to, it's to match as closely as we can to the percentage of registered voters, that, that's the file that we started, that actually have kids in your school system. So if that, in some rural districts, that's fifteen percent.
Sure.
So we're going after that benchmark, so, yes, yep.
That makes sense.
And, and not so, maybe not such a big deal in this, but when we're asking, typical surveys are for support of a particular tax level, tax impact on an operating levy or bond issue, we really have to try to be very careful, because parents tend to be much more supportive of those efforts, and we don't want to overrepresent them, so yes, that is a controlled group.
Was there any tracking of if any of the respondents were employees of the district?
We did not, we did not do that.
So there was no question even asked about argumentably?
So when we do this next year, will it be important to, A, try as best we can to match the ratios that we're talking about, parents, gender, what have you, so you're kinda truly apples to apples, or are we kinda force fitting it at that point, and you just go out to another four hundred and twenty-two people, and you just note, hey, this year it happened to be skewed a little bit more male than female or something?
Well, again, the final results have been modified to adjust for that oversampling of one group or the other, so.
I'm not talking about oversampling, I'm talking about, do we want to match the same ratios next, so that, we're asking the same questions again, and I'm gonna be very simplistic, I think it was forty percent were parents and sixty percent were not. So let's say next year, we go out and survey four hundred and twenty-two people, and for whatever reason, it's sixty percent are parents and forty percent are not, is that just an artifact of the survey that we just are aware of, or do we need to adjust accordingly, so we're truly comparing apples to apples?
We would, we would do that statistical adjustment to balance that out to the target, so.
Otherwise, why?
Yeah, you're about thirty percent.
Oh, is that what it was, okay.
Which is another reason you would do that statistical adjustment, so that it does have better longitude and value.
Right, right, and so we're gonna start, you're gonna do a survey next summer, we're gonna take the most updated voter target form, and get the most updated student information data, parent information from the district, and start with that, and it may have, odds are, it's not gonna fluctuate much, but it may have, in some areas, if that's the target we're gonna try, what was present in two thousand twenty for that, for that meeting?
This is a question you can't answer now, and you guys can worry about it at the time, but, uh, next year, we're gonna be in the middle of a rather interesting time, presidential election, when we're supposed to do this, I wonder, historically, has that skewed or had an impact on responses? Because I, I'd hate to think, oh, we're comparing apples to apples, and you know what, no, we're comparing a Honeycrisp to a, you know-
Right, well, two things I would say, and we'll just speak as well, there's more, number one, that would be one good argument to go in June, keep it far, you know, far away from that election. Number two, the issue isn't maybe, the issue is getting people on the phone in that time, it's not, once you have them, and they hear it's about the Sharkview Public Schools, people, or their local public schools, people are usually willing to share their feelings with them. The issue is, if people are getting bombarded with calls from polling companies on whatever race is going on, Minnesota State Senate, presidential, whatever, they may be more hesitant to pick up the phone, so that would be a, that would be another confounding issue. We have never failed to get to the number of respondents that we talked about, I, I didn't ask for the data on your district, but a favorable school district, a little smaller student-wise, but they had, you know, we did four hundred calls there, it was seventy-eight hundred phone calls, or something like that, to get the four hundred, because these calling are, it's an automatic dialer, and if they get a machine, it's a quick message, and then they're moving on, or if they get a busy signal or a hangup, they're going right to the next call, so the calling, call centers just keep calling until we get those.
I wasn't, I wasn't really thinking much about the numbers at my time, I was thinking about the, the attitude, the, the aura at that time around, we're all gonna be, we're already say we're tired of it now, because, now, we might be more jaded in the community.
People tend to answer the phones within a few weeks of the election, so, when is the primary election in August again, so if they, if we get to be survey, and I think we'd be pretty-
Actually, no, your, your, your Super Tuesdays in March, it's all earlier, because they're doing the conventions, they're doing the conventions in August.
Yeah, well, no, the conventions will be in June.
They actually might be even earlier, yeah.
The state conventions.
No, I'm talking about national-
The national conventions usually are-
And I don't wanna take that as a caveat, or just, that's gonna be a confounding factor.
Really, at that point, how many phone calls are you taking from people soliciting donations from all the campaigners or any member of them?
That's a good question, and, and we work, Donna Lefto is kind of in charge of our survey area, and he works closely with the American Association of Public Opinion Research, and that'd be a great question to ask them, if they're seeing any kind of biases, we get into a, you know, a non-election survey that's done in an election year, where people are, if I fit up about your, well, that's a good question.
I'm okay, it was kinda related, but, I'm all right.
All right, well, very interesting, lots of new ones to chew on, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Ash, you're gonna talk to us about kinda sharing this information.
I provided you with a communication plan prior to the meeting, it's also presented prior to this meeting to a cohort of communications committees, so we have a chance to go over this a little bit more now. So, of course, we just had the quick presentation from Baker Tilly, I have already sent information to our cabinet and principals to share the information that was just presented tonight. I will also share the same information with our staff and with the community. We have information already posted on our website, I just posted that as soon as Baker Tilly finished their presentation, so that's up for everyone, that includes the news release, as well as our reports that were shared with you tonight. We also have a communication plan that includes community engagement, that will include my, call superintendent, those one-on-ones that he offered community members at North of East Downtown, and we also plan to include information on the survey in our summer newsletter, summer slash back to school newsletter, that will be printed and mailed to eighteen-plus-thousand households at the end of this month. I failed to mention that at the beginning of the communication plan, we also have a tab here for school board communication for that committee, so we're working with Kristy, Judy, and everyone, and Matt, we will determine the messages and what makes the most sense to get that information out. We will also work with principals to determine the best way to communicate this information further with staff, some ideas that have been tossed around are working with principals to present this information at staff meetings, that way, teachers, staff are already there, they don't have to worry about coming to something after hours, they're at home, they can get information, have a chance to ask questions. We also look at some dates that are available to coincide with events that are already happening at some of our schools, we're thinking of starting small first, with presenting this information on a new community-wide level, and then seeing what the turnout is, seeing what the additional need is, and then going from there. We're thinking about coinciding with events that are already happening, examples, nothing second still, but examples at the top of my head would be the Sabre Showcase, offering it as some sort of a meeting there, and other things that we will focus on are developing a post results plan, we have the results, we have the information, we have the data, now what are we going to do with it to help move the district forward, how are we going to prioritize this?
Questions for Ashley?
Well, there, I'm gonna put that communication plan aside, was there anything that came up in that discussion? up in that discussion that you should be privy to, it's like, well, you didn't think of this or, oh, this is really good, but, you know?
Well, Kristy asked a good question, she asked if we were surprised at anything. Nothing really from the survey surprised us, there are some things that are, I would characterize as disappointing, but nothing that's surprising. But we address those, those points in the news release. But it's good information to help the communications department prioritize and help us figure out what our goals need to be. Something that stands out, teachers, I think with seventy-five or seventy-nine percent have trust and confidence in our teachers. So moving forward, we will try to put a heavier, heavier emphasis on the messages that we are putting out by focusing on teachers, on by more, and having teachers help us spread our messages, and share the positive things that are happening here in our schools.
Great, looks good. I would ask a request unless it's a massive file, just because it may get this sent to us electronically. All right.
Nice one, thank you.
Yes, well done.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley, good work.
Yeah, all the prep and everything that went into it especially as well. All right, we'll move on to item five point three, first reading of school district policies, I'll turn to policy committee chair, Peterson.
Well, this is, I'd love to say this was as exciting as the survey results, but not quite. All of the policies that are listed here, two oh five, four oh two, four twenty-three, five oh six and five twenty-three, the red lines are, you should have received them, very, very minor changes, and if there really isn't anything of significance, basically it's worth something, maybe adding something to change as far as what it used to be called, now it's called something different, so there's not really a whole lot to talk about. I know that, I know we reviewed a lot of policies at the last meeting, there are a couple of them that we ran by the principals to make sure that.
Yeah, we ran by.
Was it four twenty-three and five oh six?
No, it wasn't, it was the others.
It was the others?
These were so minimal that, yeah, those, those were a little more detailed, yeah.
If there's ever policies you could act on one time, this is, because you're changing statutory.
Right, yes.
But I think the good practice is, we'll stick with our practice if everyone agrees, give everyone a chance to do the one if they need to, we'll come back and. Okay, great, thank you, Kristy, appreciate it. All right, we move on to, we don't have anything under six, so seven, vice chair, Judy, you want to talk about the community test work?
I think I talked about it at our last meeting, the actual meeting that we had, and talked especially about, our main discussion was capacity of our various buildings versus the distribution and found out that it was clearly a distribution problem, that capacity-wise we are adequate into the future for several groups. So you have in here the agenda for next time, as all of us in the committee have been saying, it's a great group and they're always coming back with more questions and more things they want to understand before they start doing any kind of decision-making, so.
Recommendations.
The things that are going to be. Oh, recommendations, sorry, yes. So, other people in the committee, have anything more?
No, I mean, again, the group is very engaging, they bring some great questions. They've got a great process so far.
Were you going to have a meeting at? See?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
But is the plan you're going to?
Yes.
So everyone's at Central Family and I think we'll have one at Pierce now.
Is that what, okay. That'd be interesting.
Yes.
And I think it's, I think it's worth mentioning, we did reach out to Michael Kersky at the city to, you know, his team to come and share kind of the city planning and development expectations and so they graciously accepted that invitation and will be at the next task force meeting, us with our own, you know, Jeff Priest and Edson Matt, looking at kind of facilities improvement needs, kind of sharing some of the audit results from the facilities audit earlier this year.
Do we know if the information that the city will be presenting will be information that was presented as part of the proposed park and trail plan? There was a lot of demographic information in that plan as far as makeup of the city per population, whether estimated or not, or what?
I'm not certain because I didn't see the other one, but that sounds similar, you know, kind of where the development, the expectations for growth, that type of thing, yeah?
There was some great demographic information about the city and the makeup of it today.
Yeah, that sounds similar.
You always have to remember that, well, it's great to hear, I'm anxious to hear from the city, the city is not the same as the district.
The same brand.
So it looks, we're hearing from the bulk of the current population, with all those townships, there's, there's a lot more land outside the city.
And the townships have been developed areas that could be quite a whole.
And then of course we have the unique situation where Jackson Township with the friendly annexation is becoming, you know, so less of the, I don't know how you want to phrase that, but the city is growing, they're becoming more of the district sharing boundaries, so that's really unique.
All right, anything else on this topic? All right, well, our primary purpose tonight is really the survey results, so that, there's no other, oh, you know what, we have to do our round robin, so, and actually I'm going to start with Matt because it's kind of funny, Matt, you and I traded the email on, don't forget, they actually put it on the agenda, so if you want to.
That is good, because I would have totally forgotten.
Yeah, so, start with Matt.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody saw the email from NSBA, there was a call for nominations to serve the delegate assembly. I was very fortunate, earlier on in my career, Mayor Romanski suggested this, be part of the NSBA delegate assembly, this is where NSBA gets representatives from board members all over the state to bring forth lobbying ideas, suggestions for, for the legislature to consider. So we've got a couple ways to get our message out publicly, we can go through NSBA, we can go through ANSD, but this is a great opportunity to meet people from boards around the states. And it looks like now, since I've been, I've been away for a few years, that they're looking for formally people to serve a two-year term. And so they're, they're getting more rigorous, but it is a fantastic, fascinating exercise and you get to, like I said, meet a lot of fellow board members, meet legislators who are involved, and it's really interesting to hear different districts with commonality, urban versus metro versus suburban, large versus small, some things that are major concerns to board members in parts of the state aren't even on our radar, right? And so we have to think, do we support that or do we not? And it is fascinating to hear, especially from some of the Anoka Hennpens and Minneapolis and St. Pauls, just the very, very particular issues that they face. I would highly endorse it, it's asking you who wants to, to follow through, it's a high rate.
When do we need to have, is it a self nomination or do we?
I believe it is a self.
Okay, so it's kind of to us if you're interested to submit your. All right, anything else, Matt?
No.
Okay, I'll go around this one, Joe.
I do not have any.
Okay, Bob?
Today night is Sabre Nation night, it's at the football field by west. I encourage everyone to go out and support that in your high school, if you're.
No.
I'll come back, can you do that one?
Just, we had our communications meeting this evening before a board meeting, just went over the survey results, we also talked about some ways that the board members can get in front of the community a little bit more, and talked about maybe attending a PTO meeting, one of us or two of us, at the various schools. So if you have other thoughts, ideas, let me know, that's one possibility, which is being present to, be there to listen to people, community, their concerns. So, and, you know, fall practices started today for all the sports across the state of Minnesota for fall, so good luck to all the participants, have a great year, have fun. And I guess, you know, I've been working on a branding project at work, so I continuously have this mission statement and vision and values and one of the things that I guess my message to everybody is, as board members, we should never forget what our mission statement and what our mission is as a district. I think that's really important, everything that we do, that we keep that in forefront, regardless of what we're working on or what the community's talking about, that are, what our purpose is.
Well, Dave?
I don't want to take anything from you, I care. Thursday this week, we have about a hundred staff members from the rural district doing this prepare training that we talked about before. And that was that crisis and safety planning, so it's kind of a, a really positive step for us in looking at not just the physical response to something that happens, but also proactive measures that we take to look at the psychological and emotional safety of kids kind of ahead of time and then even afterwards, post beyond what we've done with, you know, typical fire drills, lockdown drills, tornado recall, that kind of stuff. So I'm excited about that. And then I had, we had talked a couple meetings ago about the middle school attendance areas and I just want to give you a brief update on that. I'm moving forward with looking at kind of the same criteria that we talked about last time, which is blocking distance, balance of demographics, transportation networks, of course the building capacities, which drives the thing, looking at, looking at just reference some developments and where those are. So I will have something documented that kind of shows that again in a future meeting, maybe want to get that on the agenda and make sure, just to put those out publicly just beyond localizing them, so everybody's there, maybe with Ashlyn and Crystal's help and Mike as well, looking at almost that timeline of, we talked about this July, April, whatever that was, here's what we had scenarios, September ninth, there's some initial feedback, kind of backing into if we really are doing something for next year to look at two middle schools, have a date where we want to decide this by and work back from that, so some guidance from the board on that as well. And the last thing I'll say is, my period of time, we had, I know we wrote about it in the rap a little bit, but the national night out, I sat in the back of my police car and.
First, we don't want to.
Yeah, there's no cup holders back there. But it was actually really, you know, Kristy was talking about, what do we do, like a PTO meeting, it seems like it's ten people, twelve, three, whatever it is, but it, and that's kind of what this is too, it's a, and even coffee with the superintendent, you're not talking to large groups, but you're really having a chance to talk to people personally and it was, we got to go to seven different parties with the group that I was with and got to talk to a lot of different people and, and I know we just went through surveys and we certainly have challenges, but there's a lot of people that are really proud of shock and being proud of what we're doing and, and think positively. We certainly have work to do, but it was, it was, it's a little nerve-wracking to walk out in front, everyone, every time, but it was still just really a, a good, positive experience.
How many people thought you were a police officer at first?
Kids mostly. I did have my shock and ease saber, I have a shock and ease saber shirt, so I might not look, I don't think I carry that police officer vibe, actually.
I got that a lot and I think they were disappointed that, when I said I really was, nope.
So it was, it was really, that, that might be something in the police department was really kind and well organized, it probably had twelve to fifteen different squads and police officers going out, they, they put Mike and I in different vehicles and we went to different parties, but I'm sure they would, that might be something as well to consider in the future for.
I think they had a hundred and one parties on the list, something like that.
I heard a hundred, the paper said something about a hundred.
Oh, yeah, Matt, he was there too, but I mean, quite an operation, I mean, it is well orchestrated, well organized, it was fantastic, but yeah.
Really good idea to include administration in the district, that's great, whoever had that idea.
We asked and they said yes.
Bravo, good idea.
It was also, it was really a joint effort as well, because I think Public Works has sweepers and there were fire trucks and we went to one and there was a, Wes, the sheriff's office that has a horse, they were driving, driving in and around, so it was really, it was a perfect night to.
Okay. Councilman Lookatriss, anything to add?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, Bob?
We were at the International Festival here about ten days ago down Hubert Park, so Mike was there that night, so I looked, that was great, and then our early childhood family at Cadlock was mailed last week to all preschool age families on the census and then our community at Cadlock, we're all there this week, so we're busy.
Always, thank you.
Just real quick, we're having our district back to school event Thursday, August twenty-ninth, every employee in the district will be there, so it would be nice for all of you to be there as well, to say hello to them, if you show up, we will put you to work.
Oh.
So we're going to show up?
To work that day behind.
Yeah.
So I don't have anything to add, but I want to ask a follow-on question. Mike and I had an inquiry from a couple parents in light of recent events nationally, rapid security, and that happens from time to time, and Ashley did a nice job also chatting in the response, but what I don't remember is, this Prepare program, we've talked about Alice probably quite a bit, whether it's sunken or not, I don't know, but Prepare's new, have we got a communication plan or, it sounds kind of formal, but just some sort of communication around that plan?
We haven't done anything community-wide, but I think some information, correct me if I'm wrong, but it has been shared with staff participating in the training.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think, because it's, it's taking a different tack, the, the emotional, psychological benefits and what have you, and I just feel like that's a twist in a positive way, that is often not thought about or overlooked and we often hear that topic again coming up nationally, so I just feel like that's something to consider, we might look for a vehicle to get something out of it.
We will.
And Ashley will be up at the training as well, so she'll have.
That's what I was. Mike?
Well, I was going to follow up and Kristy, you mentioned it, you know, today is a, it's amazing, it's August 11th, it's the first day of fall sports, so it's, so things are back up and running at the high school. I met Dave there at seven AM this morning, we, you know, the football team was, had a team meeting at that time and then was able to drop by and visit with volleyball, I'll mess this up, girls soccer, tennis, boys soccer at different parts this morning, just a lot of fun to see kids and see coaches in that environment, say hello and kind of wish them well, but I think the other part of the message is, it's, it's always, and I spent, you know, some part of my educational career coaching and so I have a passion for that, but there's something about the learning that happens when you become part of something bigger than yourself and you become part of a team or a program, that there's some really great life lessons, even above and beyond the discipline and the hard work it takes to develop skills, but I think just in terms of problem solving and, and understanding, you know, different roles at different times and so, and I tried to share that message with our student athletes and even talk about the courage to get in the arena and, and to participate in that, because there's, there's risk involved, when you compete and you, you do these things and you try out, it doesn't always work out the way you had hoped, that's great learning too, on, on a, on a journey through life, so. It was a fun way to kind of intersperse that throughout the day, we had perfect weather today, cloudy, reasonable, no rain, but it was great to see, you know, just, just all, you know, these high school kids, you know, ready. But it was great to see, you know, just, just all, you know, these high school kids, you know, ready, raring to go out there, and, uh, you know, we've just got fantastic coaches, you know, across the board, who are very committed and dedicated. So, uh, it was a fun way to, to start the week.
All right. So, we've got full slate, as listed here, I won't go through them, but our next actual school board meeting is on the twenty-sixth. We've got a couple committees that can answer that, followed by our next business meeting, or our next school board meeting on the nineteenth and the twenty-third. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn tonight's session. Thank you, Paul, or second. Thank you, Joe, all those in favor of receiving that, saying hi.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.